Welcome to the May 1st, 2025 regular city council meeting. Tonight, we have Pastor Jonathan Cox giving the invocation. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Jonathan Cox, and I proudly serve as a local licensed pastor at Island United Methodist Church. In our church, we believe that together we share God's love and show that on a regular basis through considering ourselves the lighthouse on the island. In addition to being in worship together 9:00 AM on Sunday mornings, followed by our adult Sunday School class, we show this through regular service to our community, such as having a food pantry that gives food to families in the L&amp;M School District, and a clothing closet that gives clothes to those in need once a month in Fruitland. And we donate to various groups and nonprofits that are in need. As a pastor in their first appointment, I am truly awestruck by my congregation and their desire to serve people in need and share the love of God with them. Would you please join me in a word of prayer? Loving Lord our God, we ask for your will to be shown and done tonight. As decisions are made that impact all of Muscatine, we ask that these choices be a blessing to you and the people of Muscatine. Guide us, Lord, to do your will instead of our own. We take a moment this evening to pray for blessings on us all. May you show us love on all days and show us your love to everyone around us. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Cindy, please do the roll call.
Councilmember Lampy.
Present.
Councilmember Osborne.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Councilmember Brockert.
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Conard.
Present.
Seven present, zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have two proclamations tonight, and the first one is National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States has designated the week of May 11th through the 17th of 2025 as National Police Week, and the Wednesday of that week as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And whereas the members of the Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our community, and whereas since the first recorded police death in 1786, more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have had the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including four members of the Muscatine Police Department. And whereas the men and women of the Muscatine Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Brad Bark, Mayor of Muscatine, Iowa, call upon all citizens of our community and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11th through the 17th of 2025 as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our community may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, by their faithful and loyal devotion of the responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities in so doing have established for themselves an evitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And tonight, we have Lieutenant Bus coming up. Well, thank you, everybody, for inviting me here. As Chief Keys knows, public speaking is not one of the things that I dream about doing every day, but before I left home to come here, my wife gently told me, "Remind your face that you're happy to be here." So I am happy to be here. Thanks for giving us this time and recognizing the police officers that serve your community. But as we get closer to National Police Week, we would like to take a moment to remember those Muscatine Police Officers that have died in the line of duty. There are Officer Thomas D. Moore, Officer Jake Nybert, Officer Theodore Gerisher, and the most recent officer to die in the line of duty in 1947, Assistant Chief Menzo C. Grady. To date in 2025, there have been 23 deaths in the line of duty among law enforcement officers in the United States. On a yearly basis, anywhere from 100 to 200 officers die in the line of duty. While we are all aware of some of the inherent dangers of policing, such as gunfire, traffic accidents, physical assaults, and even officers on physical fitness, many do not realize the compounding mental health damage that first and secondhand trauma of being an officer can cause. This being May 1st and the beginning of Mental Health Awareness Month, you may see some Muscatine Police Officers proudly wearing these special patches on our shoulders to bring awareness to this glaring issue. Mental health-related deaths of officers may not occur in the line of duty, but it is something they must deal with and regulate in a healthy manner throughout their career and after they remove the badge for good. The Muscatine Police Department has fostered a culture that values job-related training to skew those odds in our favor when it comes to in-the-line-of-duty deaths. We have also been on the forefront of mental health-related training by seeking out grant-funded opportunities to improve the lives of officers in our community. We now have mental health check-ins once a year for each member of the Muscatine Police Department and have established one of very few support, peer support teams in the area made up of officers who can be called on at any time by anyone within the department or surrounding agencies that is going through a difficult time in their life. We have also have a full-time mental health professional in Amy Gold, who rides with officers on a daily basis and provides services for those in the community experiencing a mental health crisis. With the emphasis on training and mental health that the Muscatine Police Department has made a priority, we hope to never add another name to the list of Muscatine Officers that have died in the line of duty. I will end by reading one of the many prayers that officers display in their work locker, their office, and even in their home. A police officer's prayer. "Lord, I ask for courage, courage to face and conquer my own fears. I ask for strength, strength of body to protect others, and strength of spirit to lead others. I ask for dedication, dedication to my job, to do it well, dedication to my community, to keep it safe. Give me, Lord, concern for others who trust me and compassion for those who need me. And please, Lord, through it all, be by my side, all through and on." Thank you. Thank you. Next proclamation is Food Allergy Awareness Week. Whereas Food Allergy Awareness Week was established as a national week of encouraging food allergy awareness and supporting those who are impacted by food allergies and anaphylaxis. And whereas food allergies affect as many as 32 million Americans, including 6 million children, and whereas the prevalence of food allergies appears to be increasing among children under the age of 18 and affect 1 in 13 children in our community, which is approximately two students in every classroom. And whereas according to the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, between 1997 and 2011, the prevalence of food allergies rose 50%. And whereas nine foods account for 90% of all food allergy reactions, peanuts, tree nuts, milk, egg, wheat, soy, fish, shellfish, and sesame. And whereas food allergy reactions can range from mild symptoms to severe reactions, such as anaphylaxis, and there is no cure for food allergies. Strict avoidance is the only way to prevent an allergic reaction. And whereas managing a food allergy on a daily basis involves constant vigilance as trace amounts of allergen can trigger an allergic reaction in some individuals. And whereas the City of Muscatine would like to raise awareness for all individuals and families affected by food allergies. Now therefore, I, Brad Bark, Mayor of Muscatine, do hereby proclaim May 11th through 17th of 2025 as Food Allergy Awareness Week in the City of Muscatine and encourage all residents to increase their understanding and awareness of this potentially life-threatening medication, medical condition. And tonight, we have Junior Miss Pearl City Harper Whitmer to come on up and accept this.
Hello, I am Harper Whitmer. I am Junior Miss Pearl City 2025, and I love informing our community about food allergies. And my favorite part about that is knowing that people get to go trick-or-treating for the first time in their lives every year because of the way I help our community. I chose this service project because when my brother was little, he was diagnosed with more than 10 food allergies, which that's a lot. And I knew I not only needed to be a good advocate for my brother, but for other kids with food allergies. This year and last year, I have handed out over 150 tail punkins to the community of Muscatine, and I have gotten seven kids to go trick-or-treating for the first time in their lives. I have influenced other people to start handing out their own tail punkins in different communities, and I have made people happy on Halloween. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Next is the approval of the agenda. Does council or administration have any items that you'd like to change or pull from the agenda? Here or none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved. Lampy.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lampy.
Second, Osborne.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item, is there anyone present tonight that would like to address an issue that's not on tonight's agenda? All right. Next item, the following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes Item 10A, Items 11A through N, Items 12A through C, Items 13A through B, and Item 14A with bills totaling $3,577,983.73?
So moved. Conard.
We have a motion by Councilmember Conard.
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. All right, 17A. "Is the third and final reading of an ordinance amending Title 10, Chapter 26, Section 2 of City Code to promote residential infill by relaxing side yard setback requirements for certain pre-existing very narrow residential parcels? Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance on third and final reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?"
So moved. Lampy.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lampy and a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Here or none, Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
And Lampy.
Aye.
Third and final reading of this ordinance is approved with all ayes. Next item is 17B, "Third and Final Reading of an Ordinance Amending Title 8, Chapter 1, Section 4, Title 8, Chapter 10, Section 2 of the City Building Code that would remove the need for submission of engineered plans for post-frame buildings that are less than 1,440 square feet in size. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance on third and final reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?"
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gendrich.
Second.
A second by Brockert. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Here or none, Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
And Gendrich.
Aye.
"Third and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is a resolution approving appointment of interim fire chief of the City of Muscatine Fire Department effective May 1st, 2025. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?"
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Here or none, Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
And Lampy.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. And next, since that passed, we are going to have you come up and get sworn in. Have you stand right here?
All right.
Have you raised your right hand and repeat after me? "I, Mike Hartman..."
"I, Michael Hartman..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the constitutions..."
"That I will support the constitutions..."
"...of the United States..."
"...of the United States..."
"...and the state of Iowa..."
"...and the state of Iowa..."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"And that I will faithfully..."
"...and impartially..."
"And impartially..."
"...to the best of my ability..."
"To the best of my ability..."
"...discharge all duties..."
"Discharge all duties..."
"...of interim fire chief..."
"Of interim fire chief..."
"...in the City of Muscatine, Iowa..."
"The City of Muscatine, Iowa."
"...as now..."
"As now..."
"...or hereafter..."
"Or hereafter..."
"...required by law."
"Required by law."
I'm gonna have you sign right here, and then if you want to go around, shake everybody's hand, and then... And then at the interim fire chiefs, he would like the fire department and police department to come up to get a picture also with him.
I know, I'm used to, like I said, habit. You walk back to the same spot, it's like...
All right, next item is 17D, "Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Special Warranty deed to Said Described Real Estate Located at 1246 East Fifth Street and Parcel 0836179005 to Muscatine County Area Habitat for Humanity, Inc. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?"
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second, Osborne.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion with the public? How about with council?
Mayor, I'm gonna abstain, obviously, because of my association with Habitat for Humanity.
Accepted. All right. Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
And Osborne.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is E, "Resolution Improving Contract and Bond with K.E. Flatwork, Inc. in the amount of $4,263,028.47 for the West Hill Sewer Separation Phase 6D Project. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?"
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second, Osborne.
And a second by Osborne. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Here or none, Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
And Gendrich.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is F, "Resolution Awarding a Contract to Higher Construction in the amount of $463,626.30 for the Folium Avenue Reconstruction Phase 3 Project. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?"
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second, Lampy.
And a second by Lampy. Is there any discussion with the public or council?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
I just want to say, I'm assuming this is the last phase on the, the end of where Hauser and Folium is, is that correct? Yeah, okay. I just want to give kudos. It's like, they've done such a great job. It's been, for the last three summers, they've taken a section of that road, and it's gone flawless. And it's like, I cannot say enough about, Kevin, you've done a great job with this. Not enough kudos are out there for that, so thank you for all you've done for that.
Any other comments? Oh, City Engineer, welcome.
Kevin Coon, City Engineer, thank you very much for that. This is the last phase. We do potentially have a roundabout at Hauser and Folium, so there could be one more phase after this, but it's separate from the rest of it.
Just a fantastic job.
Thank you.
I have had very little complaints from residents on that side since I've got both sides of Folium that are in the road where I live. So it's like, I've heard very minimal, a lot of compliments of staff going above and beyond to make sure that residents are adapted to get in and out of their households. Thank you for making us look good. I appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
Keep up the good work. Well done.
Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
And Lampy.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is 17G, "Resolution Setting a Public Hearing for May 15th, 2025 Regarding an Application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for Community Development Block Grant Funds. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?"
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gendrich. Is there any discussion regarding setting the public hearing? All right, here or none, Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
And Gendrich.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is H, "Resolution Setting a Public Hearing for May 15th, 2025 at 6:00 PM for the Mulberry Avenue Sidewalk Reconstruction Project. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?"
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Councilmember Gendrich. Is there any discussion with council regarding setting this public hearing? Here or none, Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
And Lampy.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is I, "Resolution Setting a Public Hearing for May 15th, 2025 on the Amendment to City Code Title 6, Chapter 8, Section 8, Rabies, Suspects, and Animal Bites, to reflect Iowa State Code. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?"
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second, Osborne.
And a second by Osborne. Is there any discussion regarding setting the public hearing? Here or none, Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
And Gendrich.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is J, "Resolution Setting a Public Hearing on May 15th, 2025 on Amendment 2 to the City's Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Budget. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?"
So moved. Conard.
We have a motion by Councilmember Conard.
Second, Lampy.
And a second by Councilmember Lampy. Any discussion regarding setting public hearing? Here or none, Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
And Lampy.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is K, "Resolution Expressing Intent to Provide Financial Support to Project Togo. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?"
So moved. Conard.
We have a motion by Councilmember Conard.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Here or none, Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Conard.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
And Gendrich.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is L, "Request to Approve Entering into an Agreement with the Iowa DOT to Accept the Fiscal Year 2025 Transit Joint Participation Agreement to Implement a Federal Transit Administration Operating Assistance Contract in the Amount of $170,390 to be Used for Transit Operating Expenses. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?"
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second, Lampy.
And a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is M, "Request to Approve Entering into an Agreement with the Iowa DOT to Accept a Federal Transit Administration Capital Assistance Contract in the Amount of $335,816 for Two Light Duty Buses. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?"
So moved, Osborne.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osborne.
Second.
And a second by Gendrich. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is N, "Request to Approve the Submission of a Grant Application to the Iowa DOT for Multiple Projects at the Muscatine Municipal Airport. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?"
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert and a second by Councilmember Lampy. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is O, "Request to Approve Change Order Number 3 for the Muscatine Indoor Sports Complex Project in the Amount Deduction of $438,871. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?"
So moved, Osborne.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osborne.
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Councilmember Brockert.
I do have a comment. Woo-hoo!
Perfect. Any other, any other comments? It is exciting. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is P, "Request to Approve a Purchase Order to Merrick Construction in the Amount Not to Exceed $123,528 for Technology and Low Voltage Installation for the Muscatine Indoor Sports Complex Project. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?"
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is Q, "Request to Approve a Letter of Understanding with Bonsock and Frommelt LLP for Fiscal Year 2024-2025 City Audit. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?"
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gendrich.
Second.
And a second by Conard. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is R, "Request to Approve Change Order Number 4 for the West-" Next item is R, request to approve change order number four for the West Hill Sewer Separation Project Phase Six A and B in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Councilmember Lampy. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none, request, sorry, the request is not approved. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Alright, next is nineteen A, is a request to enter closed session, closed session with potential for action to follow per Iowa Code, Section Twenty-One Point Five Point One Point C, to discuss strategy with council and matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent and where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in the litigation, and in accordance with Iowa Code, Section Six Two Two Point One Zero, to discuss attorney-client privilege and attorney-work product matters with legal counsel.
Point of order, Mayor. Can we go back to, uh, item eighteen before going into closed session? Which is the mayor council report?
Oh, yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Yep, alright. Councilmember Gingerich, is there anything you'd like to share tonight?
Oh, thank you. Thanks.
You bet. Councilmember Brockert?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilmember Connerd?
Other than that, Your Honor.
Councilmember Lewis?
Sorry, I do have something tonight. Uh, we actually have our, uh, Christian Motorcycle Association and First Baptist have our bike and, uh, a, uh, car show this weekend. Everybody's welcome to come. Uh, gates open at nine o'clock. Uh, we've got actually, uh, several cars already, people have, uh, registered, uh, to be part of that. Um, it's really a great event. We've got bouncy houses for the kids, there's food, um, so please come and enjoy. The weather's supposed to be beautiful, I think it's supposed to be a high of seventy that day. Lots of motorcycles. Last year, I think we had over a hundred and ten bikes of, you know, from regular Harley-Davidsons to custom-built, so it was really a great event, so encourage everybody to come out. And, um, also, um, as being a neuroscience nurse, I want everybody to be aware, it is , uh, Stroke Awareness Month, so please be aware of what the signs and symptoms of stroke are, um, and the acronym for that is FAST, meaning, uh, facial droop, um, and then if, uh, they have problems talking and speech, if they're having slurred speech, and arms, if their arm drifts down. The big thing is, um, the last one is T, is time. Don't drive yourself to the hospital, believe that or not, people do have strokes and try to drive themselves, you'll hit cars and do, um, get the police involved, so please just call nine-one-one. If you call nine-one-one, you can get to the hospital quick, and we have an agent now that we can actually give, if given within a time period, that can actually reverse your stroke. So, um, just make that, uh, my, uh, community service announcements for today. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Councilmember Gordon?
Nothing, thank you so much.
Councilmember Osborne?
This Saturday's opening day, the Muscatine Area Farmer's Market. I'd like to encourage folks to go, have a cup of coffee at one of local cafes, have lunch, enjoy the river, uh, support local small businesses. The farmer's market has been an incubator for small businesses here in town. Uh, my family businesses got started at a farmer's market, uh, there's a couple of down, in the downtown area that, uh, got their start there too, and, uh, it's just a, a great activity and a whole lot of fun. Thank you.
Councilmember Lampy?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I believe that, um, a petition was, uh, forwarded to you and then circulated with the council concerning the speed humps on Clermont. Um, the residents of Clermont have, uh, sent in a, uh, petition signed by sixteen of the residents on Clermont requesting that the current speed humps that are in place[1551.46]